It doesn't work for that.
Yeah. Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council regular session for Thursday, June twenty-third. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Abu Osley?
Here.
Mr. Brandt? Ms. Menzer? Mr. Sternad?
Here.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we have a couple special presentations this evening. The first one is recognizing Officer Tom Dobbs as the twenty-twenty-two recipient of the Paul Draper Spirit of Marion Award. Chief, are you? Kirsten, okay, and chief.
Thank you, counsel. So last year, we announced the rolling out of the Tom, sorry, the Spirit of Marion Paul Draper Award to the city employee who best represents dedication to public service, combined with an exceptional work ethic, humility, a sense of humor, and a sincere desire to our team and its individual members. So we had five nominees this year, and I am proud to, well, Mayor already did, Tom Dobbs is this year's recipient of the Paul Draper Spirit of Marion Award.
I know you thought they were talking about me, and then they threw your name in there at the last minute, so. As Kristen said, the Paul Draper Award was created to recognize an employee for an exemplary exemplary level of dedication serving their community. When I heard about the award and they were asked for nominations, I couldn't think of anybody more deserving than Tom Dobbs. He truly embodies the spirit of the award. He's been with the police department for twenty-six years, and he's been the Lindmar School Resource Officer, and he was the Marion School Resource Officer for a time where he did double duty for the past ten years. He also serves as the department's Public Information Officer. Tom is the consummate professional, is often heard to say he has the best job in the world. He loves the city, the department, and the kids he works with. Tom has had close contact with thousands of students over the years, and I credit him almost exclusively with creating a positive relationship between our youth and the police department here in Marion. He's got the patience of a saint, uses his position as SRO to guide and mentor students, and has not forgotten what it's like to be a kid. The positive impact he's had on students is exemplified best when he walks down the hallway or simply out in public, either on or off duty. If you pass a group of three or more people, somebody in that group's gonna yell out, "Officer Dobbs, Officer Dobbs", and come run up, give him a hug, or a high five, or a handshake. He's always got a smile on his face. He's always positive. He's got a great attitude. For somebody that's been in law enforcement for twenty-six years, that's admirable. It's a little bit perplexing to me, and sometimes annoying. Sometimes annoying, you know? But Tom volunteers to work after-school events, sometimes without pay, because he simply wants to help, and he knows what he's doing is will make the community better. He works behind the scenes on many of our non-school-related races and charitable events to ensure participants are safe and the events go off without a hitch. He's an avid biker and can be found during Iowa home games, patrolling the area around Kennick on his bike, interacting with the crowds, and being a positive ambassador for the department and the city. I'm truly happy he's been recognized for his outstanding work, and count myself lucky he's part of our department and the community. Congratulations, Tom.
Congratulations again. You know, Officer Dobbs, as the chief said, is a wonderful ambassador for our city in our community and in the region. And what I love about him is he loves his work so much that, you know, he really uses that to be a force for good in the world around him, and that's really admirable, and we just thank you for being a role model for all of us, so. Okay. Next, we have our interim fire chief with a couple of presentations. Did I say something wrong?
My name. Counsel, good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce and recognize four of our fire department staff this evening. Please come forward when I call your name. Daniel Poyer. Firefighter Poyer was previously a project manager for a tower service company. He is also a member of the Springville Fire Department and serves as a part-time employee of the Animals Ambulance Service. Upon hire, Daniel was enrolled in the Kirkwood Paramedic Program, in which he has since passed his testing as a fully functional paramedic within our department. His wife Sam will be conducting his badging this evening.
William Thomas. Firefighter Thomas grew up in Marion and graduated from Marion High School. He holds a paramedic certification as well, and was previously employed by Unity Point as a patient care tech and Animals Ambulance Service also. His wife Erin will be conducting his badging. Alex Gregg. Firefighter Greg was previously employed by Price Electric. He's also a member of the Hiawatha Fire Department, continuing to serve with them, and has an associate's degree in fire science. Alex is currently enrolled in a paramedic program, too, and nearing completion. His mother Carmen will be conducting his badging. These three firefighters have finished their first year of service, passed all the requirements to become fully recognized members of the department, and no longer probationary. Besides the backgrounds previously mentioned, these three individuals worked hard with their shiftmates and training officers to become full-shift members by hitting benchmarks of their training earlier than normally expected. This full-shift member status allows them to pick up extra shifts and function further individually, providing for more flexible shift and staffing model. The last member I'd like to recognize is newly promoted Lieutenant Tyler Monina. Tyler's a dedicated ten-year member and paramedic of the department, often referring to his career as the best job ever. He holds fire certifications of instructor one, officer one, and driver operator. He is also working towards a bachelor's degree in fire science from Columbia Southern University. Tyler's a long-serving member of the technical rescue team and oversees the department's medical report auditing process. His mother Shirley will be conducting his badging. Badges, please step forward. I hear giggles. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations again to everyone. Okay. We'll now proceed with the remainder of the meeting. At this time, we have a public forum, which is a time that's set aside for comments from members of the public on any item that is listed on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing. If there's anyone here to address the council, please come forward at this time. Okay, seeing that no one's coming forward, we will proceed with the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A-one through G-one, resolutions three-zero-six-four-eight through three-zero-six-five-nine.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes items A-one through G-one, resolutions three-zero-six-four-eight through three-zero-six-five-nine. Discussion. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. For the next part of the meeting, I will turn over the gavel to the deputy mayor pro tem.
Thank you, your honor.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Osley's abstention as follows. This will be items B-one through F-two, resolutions three-zero-six-six-zero through three-zero-six-six-two.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Osley's abstention as follows. Items B-one through F-two, inclusive of resolutions number three-zero-six-six-zero through three-zero-six-six-two. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Now, onto the regular agenda.
Yes, your honor. I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-six-three, approving a contract with Thomas Newkirk of Implicit Bias Campus LLC for review of the city's employment policies and authorizing payment in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Harper, seconded by Councilmember Atkins, to approve resolution number three-zero-six-six-three, approving the contract with Thomas Newkirk of Implicit Bias Campus LLC for the review of the city's employment policies and authorizing payment not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution three-zero-six-six-three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-six-four, approving banking services contract with Farmer State Bank.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three-zero-six-six-four, approving the banking services contract with Farmer State Bank. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution number three-zero-six-six-four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-six-five, approving the funding allocation of the Hotel Motel Grant Program for FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Atkins, seconded by Councilmember Sternad, to approve resolution number three-zero-six-six-five, approving the funding allocation of the Hotel Motel Grant Program for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-six-six, approving renewal of workers' compensation coverage for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three with Iowa Municipal Workers Compensation Association and authorizing payment in the amount of eighty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three-zero-six-six-six, approving the renewal of workers' compensation coverage for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three with Iowa Municipal Workers Compensation Association and authorizing the payment in the amount of eighty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars. Discussion.
Comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just to comment, I think this was brought up or mentioned briefly on Tuesday, but I think the point should be emphasized. But Randy would understand this very well, but the experience mod factor for the city's work comp is point-six-five. One is standard compared to most of the other comparable organizations, so anything you're under that is good, and point-six-five is very good. So that's a reflection of, I think, every, all of the employees throughout the city working and doing their job in a very safe manner. So just by doing that, you have fewer work comp claims, and everybody is working more safely, so. A mod factor of point-six-five is very good, so I just wanted to make sure people listening to that really understand how nice that is, and so.
Great, thanks for pointing that out. Any additional discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving resolution number three-zero-six-six-six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-six-seven, approving the renewal of general insurance with Iowa Communities Assurance Pool, ICAP, for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-two-three, and authorizing payment in the amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-nine dollars.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three-zero-six-six-seven, approving the renewal of general insurance with Iowa Communities Assurance Pool for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and authorizing the payment in the amount of, in the amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-nine dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of resolution three-zero-six-six-seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-two-three cigarette permit application for Corner Mart.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three cigarette permit application for Corner Mart. Discussion. All those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two-dash-eleven, amending chapter ninety-nine of the Code of Ordinances relating to sanitary sewer by increasing monthly domestic and industrial user, user charges from four dollars and sixty cents to six dollars, and this is the final consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-two-dash-eleven, amending chapter ninety-nine of the Court of Ordinances relating to sanitary sewer by increasing monthly domestic and industrial user charges from four sixty to six dollars. This is the final consideration. Discussion. All those in favor of the final approval of ordinance number twenty-two-dash-eleven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-six-eight, amending the urban forestry utility fee to a per-dwelling unit charge for residential properties and a per-account charge for non-residential properties effective July one, twenty-two.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three-zero-six-six-eight, amending the urban forestry utility fee to a per-dwelling unit charge for residential properties and a per-account charge for non-residential properties effective July first, twenty-two. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number three-zero-six-six-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next item, I will turn over the meeting to the deputy mayor pro tem.
Thank you, your honor.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-six-nine, approving contract with Abode Construction Incorporated regarding the demolition of the airport Quonset Hut, I'm struggling today, located at sixteen-ninety Marion Airport Road, and authorizing payment in an amount of four thousand nine hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three-zero-six-six-nine, approving contract with Abode Construction Incorporated regarding the demolition of the airport Quonset Hut, located at sixteen-ninety Marion Airport Road, and authorizing payment in the amount of four thousand nine hundred dollars. Discussion. Very well. All those in favor of resolution number three-zero-six-six-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two-dash-one-two, amending chapter sixty-three of the Code of Ordinances establishing the speed limit on Seventh Avenue as twenty miles per hour from two-hundred-and-fifty feet west of Sixth Street to Fifteenth Street and Tenth Street as twenty miles per hours from Seventh Avenue to Eighth Avenue. This will be the final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twelve, amending chapter sixty-three of the Code of Ordinances establishing the speed limit on Seventh Avenue as twenty miles per hour from two-hundred-and-fifty feet west of Sixth Street to Fifteenth Street and Tenth Street as twenty miles per hour from Seventh Avenue to Eighth Avenue. Discussion. All those in favor of ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve project calendar regarding the twenty-twenty-two Lau Park sidewalk replacement project as follows, inclusive of resolutions number three-zero-six-seven-zero through three-zero-six-seven-two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the twenty-twenty-two Lau Park sidewalk replacement project, including resolutions three-zero-six-seven-zero through three-zero-six-seven-two. Discussion. All those in favor of approving the project calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on the proposed plan for the twenty-twenty-two multifamily urban revitalization area. Do we have a presentation?
Just quickly, your honor, the, the following item is a public hearing related to the creation of a urban revitalization area, property that would be, become the areas on the corner of Twixtown Road and Marion Boulevard on the northeast side. What was formerly known as the Hamesite, as, as we all are aware, for some time that property was vacant and in disarray, we designated an urban revitalization area, thereby being able to provide tax abatement for redevelopment of that project, a property. The city council reviewed a project, Marion Boulevard Apartments, on the last couple of months, and have approved of that project. This designation would provide the opportunity for the applicant to submit for tenure tax abatement consistent with the urban revitalization area plan.
Okay. The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who are here to address the council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure? Please come forward. That would be Gary. Have we received any comments outside the meeting?
We have not.
Okay, please note that for the public record, and we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-seven-three, adopting the proposed plan for the twenty-twenty-two multifamily urban revitalization area. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three-zero-six-seven-three, adopting the proposed plan for the twenty-twenty-two multifamily urban revitalization area. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve resolution number three-zero-six-seven-three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two-dash-thirteen, designating an area of Marion as the twenty-twenty-two multifamily urban revitalization area. Initial consideration.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen, designating the twenty-twenty-two multifamily urban revitalization area. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next, we have a public hearing on the proposed amendment to the twenty-twenty-one multi-residential housing urban revitalization area plan. The public hearing is open. Do we have a presentation?
Just briefly, your honor, the, the district is being amended to remove a reference to the multi-presidential property tax classification due to its state legislature removing that classification from the code, and therefore, we just want our our documents to be consistent with state code. It does not affect anybody that has a application or approved application for tax abatement in the area that it does, that is, that the district covers. Sorry.
Okay, so that makes sense. If there are members of the public here to address the council on, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. And we'll ask again if there are any received comments outside the meeting.
We have not.
Okay, please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-seven-four, adopting amendment to the plan for the twenty-twenty-one multi-residential housing urban revitalization area.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three-zero-six-seven-four, adopting the amendment to the plan for the twenty-twenty-one multi-residential housing urban revitalization area. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution three-zero-six-seven-four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three-zero-six-seven-five, approving support and financial commitment pertaining to the Destination Iowa Grant Outdoor Recreation Fund application.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Sternad, seconded by Councilmember Atkins, to approve resolution number three-zero-six-seven-five, approving support and financial commitment pertaining to the Destination Iowa Grant Outdoor Recreation Fund application. Discussion. I would just note, this is a really exciting opportunity and a really, a great opportunity for the city to really complete this project that we've been dreaming about and planning for, for years. And the time is just, is just perfect as this grant became available, and it's really gonna continue the momentum of what's, what's happening in Uptown and in Marion in general. It's gonna, this, this project will really help to drive further positive growth and excitement in Marion, so. Yes, sir.
Just a quick question, are we still on track to submit that tomorrow?
We are. We submitted our final comments back to RDG, who we've contracted with assistance, for assistance on this. A little afternoon today, they're putting the final touches on it. We should get a copy back in the morning. We anticipate there to be some minor tweaks here and there, potentially, or some questions, but ideally, with the signing of the resolution tonight, we would be able to submit that hopefully by noon tomorrow.
All right, excellent.
And I would just note, this has been just one of those projects that really highlight how well we, we collaborate as a community with the city and our community partners in really achieving the best for our city, and this process has shown that, that we've had some great collaboration, everyone working together to get this application in, and on relatively short notice and getting it in. notice and getting it on on time and making sure that it's the best that it can be, so putting our best foot forward, and we always achieve the most when we work together, so. Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution Number three zero six seven five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. We'll keep our fingers crossed. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the request to amend the future land use map from the Marion Comprehensive Plan from Single Family Attached and Public Semi-Public to Single Family Detached pursuant to request and end of the request to rezone the property from agricultural holding to land unit development and the Sycamore Heights and the Sycamore Heights preliminary site development plan for property located north of Thirty-Fifth Avenue and east of Forty-Fourth Street. So this is multiple things in this public hearing, so do we have a presentation?
Yes, Your Honor, I was, we did receive correspondence today from the developer requesting that the items relative to the public hearing be removed from the agenda, and they were removing their application, planning to resubmit their proposal in a in a different format and going with a straight zoning district classification, revising their Platts and site development plans. So that was correspondence we received earlier today. The public hearing was published, and therefore, we are required to hold the public hearing, but in any event, we have received a request to withdraw their, the actionable items, so I can do the presentation, but I don't know that that's necessary.
So do we open the public hearing and ask for comments and then just continue it, or?
Close it.
We close it? We can close it, and we'll have another public hearing with the new?
Yeah, we, yeah.
Okay.
That's the legal counsel's advice.
Thank you. I'm glad we gave you a chance to weigh in on something in this meeting. Okay, so we will open the public hearing and ask for, if anyone is here to address the council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward at this time. And did we receive comments outside the meeting?
We did receive some phone calls, but we did indicate, they were after the fact, and so we knew that this was being changed, so we did indicate to them that there wouldn't be any actionable items on the agenda, and that they they planned to resubmit, just so the council's aware, when they resubmit, they're gonna have to start over, go back to P and Z and bring it forward. So with the withdrawal, it just cleans the slate like nothing.
And the notices go out all over again to?
Yep.
People within a certain area. Okay.
That is correct.
Very good. Okay, so we will close the public hearing. Okay, the final item on our agenda before the public forum is a discussion regarding radio towers. Who's handling that? The Chief? Go ahead.
I'm gonna stay seated. This wasn't as fun as it was to get up and give Dobbs his awards, but I did want to take a few minutes to bring you up to date on the anticipated cost increase we're facing to maintain our public safety radio towers here in Lynn County and give you a little history on the program. We've touched on this a little bit before. I know the city manager and the finance director have kind of been in the loop. We just didn't have any firmer numbers until last night, and it's worth noting, we don't have a contract yet to bring forward, but that's gonna happen fairly quickly, but I did want to kind of give you a little bit of background about what this is all about. So prior to two thousand and ten, none of the public safety agencies, police, fire, ambulance, et cetera, within Lynn County could talk to each other on their portable radios. We were on a UHF system. The other agencies were on either a different UHS system or even a VHS system. There was limited abilities for the dispatch centers to connect with portables from other agencies. Officers told me that back when, back then, they used to keep a portable scanner in their car so they could listen to the Cedar Rapids channels in the event a chase or something was coming our way or they needed help, they had no other way of knowing it unless they heard it on the scanner. It wasn't safe or efficient, and back then, a determination was made to partner with other agencies in the county transition from a singular analog systems, from three or four singular analog systems to an interoperable digital joint communication system, which would allow all agencies to fully communicate with each other via portable radios, share costs, and create additional redundancies in our ability to dispatch calls for each other here in the county. As you know, we've got three public safety access points here. We've got one, Cedar Rapids has one, and Lynn County has one. If one of those agencies happened to go down, ours went down recently in a switch over on our nine-one-one communications, and all lines were then routed to Lynn County, and then they were actually dispatching for us for a few hours. The new system that they've gone to would also allow us the capability to add additional counties on, communicate with other counties, add radio capabilities for smaller volunteer fire departments that are here in the county, add ambulance services and other emergency management personnel. Back when the system was created, again, this was two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, the cost, it was determined the cost should be divided between the big three in the county, which was us, Cedar Rapids, and Lynn County. Cedar Rapids funded fifty percent of it, Lynn County funded thirty, and we funded twenty percent. My understanding was the way they came up with this formula was based on call volume, and that Marion's initial cost for the equipment and software was approximately two point six million dollars. I don't know that anybody here was on board back then. I have no idea how they paid for it, if they bonded that. I know Lynn County did a bond for their portion, but I don't know how Marion had paid for theirs. When they created that, they came up with a radio governance board. The governance board is, the three board members are the chiefs of police from Marion, Cedar Rapids, and then the sheriff from Lynn County. Since inception, the bulk of the maintenance, equipment purchases, and enhancements to our joint communication system over the years have been funded via nine-one-one phone line surcharges. Each county has a nine-one-one board, which is in place to essentially coordinate and manage the nine-one-one phone line systems. The state places a surcharge on each phone line, mobile and landline in the state, and then the legislature determines what percentage of that money is passed out to the local nine-one-one boards, which then trickles down to the individual PSAPs. That money has been used over the years to enhance the capabilities of our PSAPs, so we can now get nine-one-one calls via text or over voice-over internet systems, and not just from regular phone calls. It's been allocated, money from that fund has also been allocated to cover console equipment in the dispatch centers, tower equipment, maintenance, and repair. The last four years, they've been covering lease payments for towers, which we used to pay for one down on Berry Road, which is one of the main towers that we use, and I think that was roughly thirty-five to forty thousand dollars a year. The nine-one-one board picked that up here the last couple of years. If I can get my computer to change things. So how did we get here today? So as I said, the legislature determines what percentage of those nine-one-one surcharge monies are to be distributed to the local boards. When we first created our joint communication system in two thousand and eleven, there was enough money to cover the tower equipment and maintenance. Since then, the number of landlines in the state have decreased as people started relying solely on their cell phones, so that surcharge money has gone down, and the amount charged per phone line, as well as the percentage of funds distributed to local nine-one-one boards, has not increased enough to keep up with the rising cost of the technology we're using today. Our original contract has expired, and yesterday, we received a briefing, a briefing from a vendor, who has actually been the subcontractor handling maintenance repairs under the initial contract. They told us about the equipment we had that was at or nearing end of life, and it would need to be replaced in the coming months and years, and what options were available to us. It's not cheap. The original cost for the equipment and software for the system was roughly eighteen million dollars. If we replaced equipment that has already reached end of life and additional equipment as it dies over the next ten years, we're looking at a cost of approximately twenty-four million dollars in today's dollars that would have to be shared between the three agencies, so about twenty-four percent of that, or twenty percent of that would be ours, if if that's what the council agrees to. The vendor has proposed a ten-year maintenance contract that the governance board believes makes financial sense. Keeping with the original agreement to split costs fifty percent, thirty percent, and twenty percent between Cedar Rapids, Lynn County, and us means we're gonna need to ask for a comm center budget to be enhanced by around twenty percent for fiscal year twenty-three, which starts next week. As I said, I apologize for the timing on this. We've known about this for about a year. We just didn't have an exact amount or just how bad a shape our equipment was actually in. Some of the equipment, they're telling us, has to be replaced by December thirty-first, or the system's gonna be inoperable. We looked at that option of just replacing things as they die. Our first year cost, if we went that route, is essentially gonna be the same as what it will be for this ten-year contract. I didn't include any money in our fiscal year twenty-three budget for the comm center for this, because I didn't know what the the dollar amount was gonna be, but I did want to make everybody aware along the lines that that is coming and it's here. The vendor has told us that they are gonna have a potential contract ready, perhaps by the next council meeting to bring forth. The governance board is, we agreed that it was the best course of action to bring back to our councils and the board of supervisors and say, this is the way we think we should go. Ultimately, that's up to you guys. We looked at adding additional funding options from some of the smaller agencies that participated on this, so you've got the volunteer fire departments and ambulance services and and people like that, they pay a fee into the nine-one-one fund, so part of that money that we'd be getting through nine-one-one going forward comes from those agencies, but again, I think the bulk of it's gonna fall on on what they call the big three. I can answer questions as much as I can. If you get too technical, Councilman Harford, I've I've arranged to have a representative from the vendor be here when we have the contract, and he can explain kind of the microwaves and repeaters and and things like that. I can, you know, I can see the wheels spinning in your head already, but so any questions I can answer about that, I'll be happy to do it again. I didn't want to give the exact amounts that were quoted or told us yesterday yet, because I wanted to give Lynn County and Cedar Rapids a chance to talk to their councils first without putting the number out there, but I think it's the best route to go. I don't know that we have an alternative, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Councilmember Sternad.
Thank you, Chief. On the on the split, when you say the big three, you know, the, is in, I'm not educating you, you know this. Lynn County, obviously, contracts out with, you know, Hiawatha, Robbins, Springville, some of those other smaller communities, but is there, has there been any discussion? We realize that you know, county is just a little bit more than what our split is on that, but the next level to the onion, so to speak, would be the townships. Has there been any discussion about going to the townships for participation to this, because that would be more of the twenty-eighty agreement that I would see as being another layer to that. I'm just curious, you know, this is, this technology is supposed to be easier, it's supposed to be more friendly, but it's certainly getting to be more and more costly. Just trying to find other revenue streams, because that seems to be the thread that all cities are looking for these days, is trying to find some ways to backfill some of these these overages.
We did have a discussion about that, especially some of the volunteer fire departments on what they're paying, and what I was told is that they pay the nine-one-one system based on the number of radios they have. They're infrequent users of the system. They purchase their own radios. We don't have anything to do with that. The nine-one-one board doesn't have anything to do with that, but whatever number of radios they want to use, they pay a fee. I don't have that number. I don't think it's much, but I, again, I don't know what their capabilities are either.
Sure, so it sounds like the conversation though is going more down to the end user versus the, I guess what I'm trying to look at is the governance that runs the volunteer fires or the other outline communities, again, to going from state to county to municipality to township. I guess I'm looking at the township in general, you know, because the township has their own revenue stream, unlike the volunteer fire departments don't. I mean, obviously, the, you know, they're part of their local community. I guess I'm looking at more of the township themselves spreading that risk and cost, but I, that might be, that might be a technical question, but I think it still warrants, you know, when we take a look at fire service, that actually is a derivative of the township versus the actual end user, but that was, that's, I think you've answered my question, and I was just kind of trying to find some other revenue streams.
Thank you. Go ahead, Grant.
This will be semi-non-technical. Maybe it'll be actually, it'll frame up a question for the vendor to answer when they present at our next meeting. I think you said that there is a section of our, or a component of our our total system that is gonna become inoperable at the end of the year? And did they provide any insights why that is the case? I think just because the equipment that we have is, those particular items are obsolete, then they won't service them anymore. Okay. And so when we're talking about the equipment, I I've got a list here of just kind of random stuff that we talked about. We've got, the system has a, I think it was a hundred and three repeaters around, so repeaters where the radio wave will bounce off the repeater, it strengthens it, sends it to the next repeater, and ultimately gets to the dispatch center. Prior to this system, I was told that even in like the schools, we couldn't talk on our radios, because the old system wasn't strong enough. You go to Lyndale Mall, the officers couldn't talk on the radio. Replacing those repeaters is three and a half million dollars today at that cost. We've got microwave dishes, two and a half million dollars, antennas themselves, a million, there was third-party software, software for the system itself was nine million dollars, and it's one of those things that because it's so critical, it's, it's, I don't think it's wise to wait until something dies before we replace it. You almost have to just trust the manufacturer. When they say this is kind of the end of life, you're sort of at the mercy of them. If if we can't get somebody to fix it or update it, we we can't operate if it goes down. Yeah, and I, I certainly wasn't suggesting that we, you know, we get into a wait till it breaks kind of a condition. So just a simple question and then a comment. Fire depends on this, correct? Yes. Okay. So it's not just a one-agency problem. Do any, do federal agencies that might respond to this area tap into it and utilize it? So the the governance board can give permissions to use radio channels on our system, so like EMA, we've got, I think there's three portable radios that are assigned to individuals out there that we have given them permission to monitor certain channels. We've got two or three channels, we gave them, Cedar Rapids gave them three of theirs, and Lynn County gave them three of theirs. It's not out of the question. I know from federal agencies, the FBI's won't interact with anybody's, because they're the FBI, and, you know, they don't do that, but certainly other agencies could. I know task force situations that we've got extra handheld radios that we will loan out sometimes if we're working a lot with an agency, so that they can talk. Yeah, so the comment, maybe this this will feed into some information that the vendor will provide us, is given the supply chain constraints in the electronics world, how is that going to affect change out of the entire system? I think that's, that's we talked about that briefly, that it would be at a mutually agreeable time, because they see things coming up, so again, I think we're kind of relying on them to tell us, hey, it's time to replace this component and get it ordered soon enough. I think the other big question, if we did it piece by piece, is the inflation built in there, you know, if if today's dollars, it's twenty-four million, what's it gonna be in nine years if we have to replace, you know, ten repeaters? Are we gonna be paying double or fifty percent more? This maintenance contract that they proposed is basically an end-to-end. They take care of everything. And they're, it's their responsibility to lock those prices in for themselves, because we've got a set amount that we're gonna pay. It kind of takes some of that risk out. I think you just want to be running neck and neck with Barcalo and his sanitary sewer upgrades.
I've got, I've got a question, kind of tangent to Randy's, but this fifty, thirty, twenty split, I understand your presentation, this was, that split was decided in two thousand and ten.
Yes.
Okay, so is it the recommendation of the board to use the same split, or was that split reevaluated? Obviously, I can see a lot of things changing, a lot of the numbers potentially changing on what happens twelve years later. So was there any review of that split? I mean, Randy was talking about revenue streams and other offsets, and I understand that aspect, but I I didn't hear you talk about a review of that split being done before before we enter another ten-year contract.
Yeah. Other than than just our common knowledge between the department heads about about the radio usage, we could certainly do that. If you, if you want to dive into that about the usage, I mean, it's If you, if you want to dive into that about the usage, I mean, that it's a valid point.
Well, again, you're only going to do it every ten to twelve years, so I, I just want to make sure everybody's paying their fair share. I don't know what would be involved in reviewing that, but I I guess I would have anticipated. Since it's only being done or reviewed that often, that that might have been done already.
Yeah. Now, I can, I'll look into that before we come back and I'll have that. And then we can, if, I guess, the procedurally. We can come back and discuss it again and and then present a contract at a later date after that with that split built in there. It would. I think it would probably have to go back to the governance board again before the contract could actually come out.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so somewhat in the same. Conversation, let me get my muzzle off here. The. So the big three were selected at the origin of this in order to split these costs up, but. Aren't there other communities that have grown since the time this came into? Play and, you know, Hiawatha, Robbins, others, others are growing. I mean, they have projected growth at some point. It seems to me there is a broader mix of municipalities that are supporting the system and that assumes that they use the system. So any insights to that?
I think that would be. I think it would be based off the P S apps, the the dispatch centers themselves. Lynn County contracts out with the Hiawath and Robbins and provides services to them. So that would be included, I guess, in Lynn County's portion of that. Cedar Rapids is kind of on its own with police and fire. Lynn County also does a lot of the rural fire departments, the volunteer fire departments in the area. So I think part of that. Was call volume, but part of that was based off of those other agencies are already paying into a fee to. Lynn County for dispatch services, which I'm sure they built in that cost.
Okay, different revenue channel, if you will.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring forward, you know, Chief, we'd had some previous conversations and it still kind of lingers around again to the importance of. You know, we've got these, we've got. All of these different radio communication systems and going back to just one central. Dispatch, you know, or emergency services like what we talked about in the Quad Cities, you know, so it's, it's. Terribly unfortunate that we can't seem to come together to get those things put together because there's a lot of duplication of that, but. It's also hard to understand that we have, we have actually have a company here in Marion that still services the radios that Collins Aerospace built. Back in the nineteen sixties that was on the rocket that went to the moon. And they're still repairing those radios here today because they're still used in aircraft and and yet this stuff has such a short shelf life on them. With that technology, but. Just a couple of comments. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Do you have anything else, Chief?
No.
Okay, so there's nothing for us to do.
No, I just kind of wanted to bring you more up to speed as the information comes in and I'll come back. Yep, we'll come back again in the future with more information.
Perfect. Okay. We'll move on to the final item, which is the public forum, which is time that's set aside for member, for comments from members of the public on any topic. If there's anyone here to address the council. Please come forward. I don't see anyone in the room, so. Yes, you have something. Go ahead.
I just wanted to point out, and I think the council was ordered a letter from Mr. Knutson regarding the Sycamore Heights development. I just wanted to.
Was that today?
Came, I think it was submitted to us yesterday and distributed to the council this morning, I believe. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. I did not mention that, but I know Mr. Knutson emailed and indicated that he, he didn't know that, he didn't notice that that was mentioned, but. I figured you'd already seen it, so I failed to mention that during the public hearing, but I want to bring that to light.
Okay. Thanks for noting that. Okay. Anyone else? All right, then we will move on to council comments before adjourning. We'll start with Mr. Harper.
Thank you, your honor. Just. Three general comments here, this strat planning session that we all participated in last Saturday morning. I know that was the. Productive output from the leadership team working on Friday through that whole thing. I just want to share publicly what I conveyed to Ryan Waller, our city manager after that, because it, I was, as I drove back home from that session. As I reflect upon some of my strat planning events that I participated in through my professional business life. I felt that that was one of the top sessions that I've been. Part of, and I think part of that was just from the standpoint of. The focus and the clarity that it provided in in trying to develop a certainty for our go forward execution. So I. All y'all, I just want to congratulate you on that, that session. I thought it was really very good. Today, I spent a bit of time wandering around in the uptown, just kind of looking at the progress, had met, met a friend for coffee at the, at the coffee shop. And. I'm really impressed with how that, that is all unfolding. I just continue to be amazed at every time I go up there, just the improvements that are being made and just the aesthetic. Comfort that it's going to provide to our our residents. And then finally, the combination of. Officer Dobbs on his spirit of Marion. Award recipient and then also the fire department appointments and promotions. It really kind of gelled with me today that. And I've, I've felt this over other promotions and appointment activities and announcements that that have been made. It really is gratifying to see the quality and the nature of the people that are getting involved in our emergency services. And so I just want to say thanks to both of the departments for that effort. That is really great and it just. I think it really sets a good tone for for the entire community.
Thank you. Sir Jensen.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Again, I continue to get unsolicited positive comments about our city. This in spite of all the construction going on, in spite of all of the. Travel, all the construction, especially in the uptown area. Actually, people are excited about all of that because they see things happening all the time and it's really conveying that. I think overall. Direction that our city continues to have, not just this year, but for a number of years in the past. And also gives us the opportunity to say, just keep waiting around for the next two to five years. And see all the other changes that are going to happen in our city. So it's really exciting and positive to talk to people. Again, their comments are always, you know, ninety percent positive and ten percent are just really asking what's going on. So I think it's terrific to receive those comments.
Zackens.
Just a ditto on the comments about the strategic planning session. It was very well done and just excites me more about being a part of this community. So kudos to the team for the hard work that you put into that. And congratulations to Officer Dobbs, sort of a cool thing. Couple of other things. So earlier this week, I had a group of Kirkwood colleagues that we spent the day up here in Marion for a retreat. And Jill and team hosted us at the chamber, which was wonderful. And Bill provided a really great tour of the library that has caused a lot of great conversation about how Kirkwood and the library can sort of partner on some things. So.
Nice.
All of those folks do not live in Marion. Very disappointed by that. You actually.
They will, though.
Yes. What I will say to you is that was part of my sort of, right, that day, I thought, listen, we're going to get you here one way or the other. One of them lives up in Dubuque. And she was commenting on just how I think what you were, what you were stating, Steve, just how incredible our community is and all of the stuff that's happening here. So it was fun to get. Right, their their feedback. They get to see what I talk about all the time. So it was really a fun thing to do.
Thank you. Sir Ned.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, for my part, since the last meeting that I attended, I was in the, at the last set of meetings. I had the chance to speak to the Marion Leadership in Action graduating class, which is. An opportunity to engage future potential leaders of the community. So. I really appreciated that opportunity to just talk with them. Hopefully energize them to jump in and be part of the action and offer their, their energy and their talents to help keep moving our city forward. We need to constantly be working on building. Building the pipeline of leaders that will step forward and and share and shoulder the burden and shoulder the responsibility of. Of moving our city forward well into the future and Seth was part of that class and so congratulations on, on taking that. Being a part of that class and I think it seemed to me like he was probably the popular kid in the class. There's been several announcements of new businesses recently coming. We had a. Ribbon cutting yesterday at Treasured Moments Photography. We have one on Saturday. For a restaurant. It's just so exciting because it seems like every, if not every day, every week, there's. Exciting announcements of businesses and that's an indicator. That investors see the potential here, you know, elsewhere, the economy may not be the best or the best for starting a business, but. You know, that created, that indicates that there's some certainty here in terms of potential for success for a business. And that doesn't happen by luck or chance. It happens, again, I've said this before, I know, but. It, you can't stress it enough. It happens because people have confidence in the decision making. They have confidence in the city team that's doing the work. They have, they have, they see credibility. In a city where they they're going to be putting their money and that that helps to drive everything. Investors want certainty. So. Good job to everyone and let's keep it, let's keep it going. We also had a groundbreaking out at the M E C. For some warehouse facilities. We have the big bridge ribbon cutting for the Seamar Trail Bridge, the artistic entryway feature. That is. On July first. Even though it doesn't have the complete artwork up on it yet, it'll be a while, but we get to open that. And it's just one more step in in completing that that project. And I know that our team has worked on that for a long time and we. You know, it's probably what several years behind what it initially was scheduled to to be completed, but it was worth going back. And starting from scratch and redesigning that and working with an artist. I think we're all going to be happier with the end result for a long, for a long time. So thanks to everyone for their patience and for their. Willing, being willing to. Take the time that it took to to see that project through. It's going to be an exciting ribbon cutting. Ryan Waller and I have been meeting with all the boards and commission. Leads and their staff liaisons. When Ryan started, we talked about, you know, that we're moving so fast and we're doing so many things and everything that, we have lots of boards and commissions, I think over eighty positions. And everything they do affects our, our city. It's an impression on our city, on who we are, on our team. And it also affects the residents. They make decisions that affect the quality of life of residents and. Some more than others, but all of them have some kind of impact. And so we wanted to be sure that everyone is on the same page that. We, that we as a city team are doing what we need to to support them in their work, to see what their challenges are, to see what. Yeah, you know, what their plans are for moving forward. So it's been a very positive project. We've met with a number of them. We still have a number of them to do, but I think that's a very worthwhile, very worth, time worthwhile spent. So with the Plaza Design Project, I know it's been mentioned, but it's. You know, that's the most. Visible spot in our town that when someone drives here, that is the impression they get of our town and I love. I love the time that it's being spent and the the care and the effort into making sure that it is something that. We're really going to be proud of and it's going to make Marion a standout community. I'm just so excited about seeing that come to life. There's been committees that have been, we're helping the staff with design and with the input on. On how that comes about, but in the end, I think we're all, again, going to be very, very proud and it's just going to make Marion even more of a destination. Ryan and I have also been having regular breakfast meetings with the mayor and city manager of Cedar Rapids, and I think those are very productive. We have another one coming up on the first and we're going to think invite them to join us for the ribbon cutting of the bridge. But we're trying to be more collaborative and talk about things with them. So that we can work together as a region as much as possible and see, find where areas, find areas where we can collaborate and work together and. The strategic planning that's been mentioned. You know, I, I, I've. Was really proud of that day because I felt like that was the most. That we've ever been, you know, the most, the most planful we've ever been in terms of, like, I feel like we have a roadmap. You know, and the decisions we're going to be making in the future have, we have something to tie them to. And that's so important, I think, for us and for our residents. So thank you for everybody, for, to everyone, for all your hard work on that. I know it takes a lot of time. And. We all benefit when we spend the time to to make sure things are done, done right. And I felt like we have finally. Really put on that reaching higher mentality as a team, like we're all going in the same direction and we're all reaching higher. We all have a common goal. It was really exciting, something really special, I think. Tomorrow, I'll be at the farmer's market. It's my turn for the office hours, so. If anyone listening, come and see me at the farmer's market. Be happy to say hello and answer your questions. And speaking, there was a comment about uptown and the the positive comments we're getting from residents. That's, that's every day, but the most. The coolest comment I got earlier this week. Was because we we think that, you know, we're changing uptown, that there's, there's changes happening or some people see it that way. Well, one of the older residents said. What's happened reminds me of how it used to look with buildings on both sides of the street and the angled parking. And it kind of brought back, so I don't know, Steve, you grew up here, so you might remember that, but. You know, so that was kind of a cool comment that someone saw it as it's taking it back to how kind of, you know, it's similar to how it used to look. So that, that, that kind of made me feel good, you know, so. You don't often hear that kind of a comment. And finally, I was asked by one of the businesses if I would engage with their summer interns to get them excited about, you know, maybe possibly locating here and staying in the community. So I talked with the chamber and we're going to partner on a. On a program that we're going to do regularly, not for for interns and for. New employees who are starting with 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 companies, just as a community orientation. Project to, so just a few hours where they come in, we do it once a year, probably, you know, on July and. And we give them a community orientation about the opportunities here, the opportunities to engage and to be involved, the opportunities for quality of life, all types of things. So. That's my next exciting project that I'm working on. With that, thank you for a good meeting and have a great weekend. Enjoy the Independence Day holiday and we'll see you next time.